My name's Alex Fogel. And, um, four years ago, this city had a lot of potential. We had the potential to reduce crime by doing away with the voluntary compliance and discretionary enforcement of our laws. We had the potential to have a more diverse economy, through workforce development, apprenticeship programs, and attracting new businesses to the city. We had the potential to rein in some of the development in this city and get a vision for what we want to be as a whole city, not just segments, one at a time. All this potential, let me ask you, if you were a sports team and your team didn't meet its potential, what would you do? You'd rather the coach, right? If you were a businessman and your business wasn't reaching its potential, what would you do? You'd rather the managers, right? That's why I'm running. We need this city to reach its potential, and we need people who can help it do that. The same potentials that existed four years ago exist today. What didn't exist four years ago is me, running for an office to help the city meet that potential. I appreciate your vote on November 2nd. Thank you.
How's everybody tonight?
Yeah, alright.
Alright. I'm John Newman, and I'm running for city council. So, all of those new visions, new commitments, new man, those signs, this is the guy. So, the question is, why do you want to run for city council? Sometimes it's good to answer a question with a question. I got a few questions that I want to ask all of you out there tonight. Why are we talking about the same problems every election? Year after year after year? We keep talking about the same problems. Why? Does Myrtle Beach set an example for the rest of the country to follow? Do we believe that? Do other cities look to Myrtle Beach for leadership and solutions to their problems? No. Do we really believe that crime is at the lowest it's been in years? Do you believe that? So, you want to know why I want to run for city council? I want to bring some humility and some reality to city council. We need new vision on city council. We need new thinking, and we need new leadership. We need a city council that cares about our community the way, where's Nicky? The way Nicky James cares about his community. You want a good example of what we need? Just look, look at, look at Nicky. He's a great example of how one person alone can make a difference, just by example. The jazz festival this evening tonight, that's what we need on city council. We need to do away with the area's attitude that our government has towards our citizens. So, that's why I want to run for city council. Now, I think he's still, uh, still gone, so, uh, I guess, uh...
As Mike Lauter continued to run for city council, we're calling him a public servant. I've been a public servant since 1972. I served in the United States Marine Corps, and after that, I became a police officer at Myrtle Beach Police Department. And then, I finished up my career as Chief Deputy of the Ory County Sheriff's Office. After that, I got to be a member at some point in time for the city's zoning board of appeals. For five years of that, I was the chairperson. While I was a member at that moment, after two times, and on three times with the charm, I was elected to the city council. And I've been serving ever since then. I am a public servant. I don't need this as a career. I've already had a career. I enjoy serving the people of Myrtle Beach. And it makes no difference to me what community, what neighborhood you live in. Because let me tell you about Mike Lauter. I care about every neighborhood in the city of Myrtle Beach. I'm just an old country boy from Bend, South Carolina, who moved here about fifty-two years ago, and I've stayed here. And I've served this community as a football coach in Red League Football. I am a public servant. And this right here, this doesn't do anything for Mike Lauter. Let me tell you what makes Mike Lauter tick. When I'm meeting with folks, whether it's a beachside chat, whether it was like somebody yesterday with a problem with speeding in their neighborhood, something needs cleaned up in their neighborhood. I am in neighborhoods, listening, and talking with folks. I don't have any special interests except for one thing. My special interest is the citizens and residents of the city of Myrtle Beach. And please remember to vote for me November 2nd. Thank you.
Well, I'm Greg Smith, and I'm running for reelection to the city council. You ask Greg, why do you want to run for reelection? It's a stressful job. It doesn't pay much. People are angry at you. I'm doing it because I care about the city of Myrtle Beach. I wasn't born here. I don't think any of us were. Um, I was born in Charlotte, but I moved here when I was eight years old. I went through the Myrtle Beach schools. Ms. Cookie Goings was my guidance counselor. But I've, my whole life, I've been giving back. I've been volunteering. And I don't think there's a better way to support this city than to be on city council. I'm not here to be famous. I'm not here to climb the ranks of elected officials. I'm here to serve the city, and that's what I continue to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We had two likes, now I'm missing one. I'll give you this one, Greg. You're going to be first to go at this question right here, so you can help see for a minute. Thank you, Greg, and all others, for their, you know, responses tonight. Um, in their comments, then, remember what you say will go very far. So, remember, and by the way, for the few that are still here that would take out what you say, good or bad. So, let's go on and have a good time tonight. Now, what we're going to do is address some of the same questions. If you have a question that you want to be addressed, Ms. Erica has her index cards in the back. You raise your hand, and we'll try to get through it. But one of the things I want to ask is the crime that's going on in Myrtle Beach. What are your perspective about the crime? Is it increase, decrease? What is your thoughts about it, and how would you deal with it? Start with Greg.
Hello? So, now, the reality is that crime in Myrtle Beach has decreased. It's decreased since the highest level, if we're talking about total Part I crimes. In 2004, there were over 6,000 Part I crimes. In 2020, there were less than 3,500. But that doesn't matter if the crime is in your backyard, or if the crime is perpetrated against you. We're working hard to fund the police. We've increased the police's salary. One of the first things we did when I was elected four years ago is the police retirement and retention plan. That increased starting salaries for police officers. We also increased budgeted positions. Now, you'll hear a lot of things tonight about, "Oh, I would do this. I would do that." And four years ago, when I ran for city council, I said those things too. But you can't do everything. You can't, the council manager form of government, the mayor can't just say, "This is how it is, and this is what's going to happen." A council member can't just say, "This is how it is, and this is what's going to happen." What we can do is provide the funding to the police department that they need. And if they ask for something, they get it. So, um, the crime has continued a steady downtrend. But again, if that's the crime that's perpetrated against you, that doesn't matter. So, we're going to continue to fund the police. We're going to continue to increase their numbers. And we're going to continue to make the Myrtle Beach Police Department a great place to work, so people will stay. Thank you.
Well, I wish I had enough time to talk about crime. I wish I had enough time to talk about law enforcement. Personally, I don't think there's anybody in this room, or anybody who's in this room over here, that knows any much more about law enforcement and crime than I do. Let me say this. We do have crime. Any crime at all is crime. And any crime at all is not good, period. But, reality is this. When you talk about these FBI statistics, one thing that is very important you need to remember about that. Those crime statistics are based on the primary residents in a community. Those crime statistics for Myrtle Beach are based on anywhere from 24,000 to 35,000 residents. Not 200,000 or 300,000 that are here at any given time. Which, if you take it like that, yes, you know, when you take it just for 34,000 to 24,000 people, that crime statistic looks pretty bad. But, if you do this like other communities, if you take the average daily population of the city of Myrtle Beach over one year period of time, in any given year, you will realize, if the crime statistics were based on that, we would probably be one of the best communities in the country, in the country, when it comes to crime. Based on statistics. Now, do we have crime? Yes, we do. Are we working every day to help that? Yes. Five years ago, we started an mission to add ten police officers, allocate ten police officers to the police department for seven years. Now, have we reached that? No. Why? Let me give you some, some real statistics you need to figure out and understand. Over the past two years, 50% of the police officers in this nation have walked away from the job. In 2020, 33% of the law enforcement officers that graduated the Criminal Justice Academy in South Carolina walked away from the job. It had nothing to do with morale within a department. What it had to do with, that officers felt like they were unappreciated. And they just walked away. When you talk about that defunding, let me, let me be very clear on this. Mike Lauter is not into defunding business. I'm into funding business when it comes to law enforcement. Okay? 100 plus. Okay. Hey, let me tell you this. If you want to talk to me about him, you're that. I'll hang around here and talk with you all night. Thank you.
Thanks, Wayne. So, I have some statistics for you. Let's look at Las Vegas. There's a big city that has millions of tourists coming, that 10 to 1 compared to the residents of tourists. Your chance of becoming a victim of violent crime in Las Vegas is 1 in 182. Now, it's 1 in 200 in the state, which compares exactly with South Carolina. Your chance of becoming a victim of violent crime in Myrtle Beach is 1 in 83. Your chance of becoming a victim of violent crime in North Myrtle Beach, just across, you know, the line right here, 1 in 237. Think about those statistics for a second. I wrote to Amy, the Chief of Police, a couple weeks ago, and I said, "Amy," I introduced myself, and said, "I would love to just sit down over some coffee, uh, I'm running for city council, and talk about, you know, this issue of crime." A week later, I got a response. "Thank you. I've given your request to the city manager." So, you want to know why we have a problem with crime in our city? That's why. So, what can we do about it? Well, one thing that we could try to do, when I go back to thinking outside the box, is what about tying the city manager's pay to city council's goals and our problems that we have in the community? Anybody ever think about that? You want to get paid 200,000, 300,000 a year, whatever it is, that's fine. Do your job. You don't, you shouldn't be getting paid if you're not doing your job, or what city council defines as important. So, we need to get a look at that relationship and city council. I don't want to use the word "control," because I don't want you to think of control as like, "I'm controlling them." But we need to exercise leadership, and we do need some control over the city manager in the form of goals tied back to his pay. Maybe then something will get done. Because it goes back to my original question. Why, after all of these years and all of these elections, are we talking about crime with a $230 million budget? Thank you.
To paraphrase Mark Twain, "There's lies, there's darned lies, and then there's statistics." When you look at the, um, Part I crimes, FBI Part I crimes, they're broken into two major categories. And they simply break down to crimes against persons and crimes against property. Now, if you combine overall Part I crimes, I'll be the first to agree that they're down. But if you separate out Part I crimes against persons, in Myrtle Beach, they are up, 17%. That's a fact. There's your statistics. Okay? So, if you're only concerned about Part I crimes, burglaries, auto thefts, which have been on the increase and everything, crime is down. But if you're interested in your personal safety, and that of your family, the crimes are up. There's a saying that really, you know, goes me. It's, "Myrtle Beach is a tourist town." No, it's not. Myrtle Beach is a city of over 35,000 residents that has to have a beach that attracts tourists. We live here, and that matters. And we need a city council that recognizes that matters. Now, the city council doesn't tell the police chief what to do. But collectively, city leadership does tell the city manager what to do. Four years ago, the policies of the police department were the same. Why haven't they changed? Voluntary compliance is letting the citizens know what's against the law, and expecting them to voluntarily comply with that. Now, that will work in a nice, sedate, mature neighborhood or community. How well does it work in a transient area with a lot of immature people coming to visit all the time? It doesn't. It's been proven it doesn't. Yet, nothing's changed. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. We're on the road here. Uh, we're moving on to the next question here. Now, Myrtle Beach is growing rapidly, and this has been one of the cornerstone of Myrtle Beach as far as concept. I-73, I-74 corridor. I've been seeing this thing since I was a kid. And I hadn't seen that yet, but I know she, girl never was here a few weeks ago, or whatever. But, uh, it's needed. And what is your, what is your thoughts about it? Thank you, Mike. Uh, what is your thoughts about it, and how do you think, uh, how do you feel about it, and what do you propose to, uh, to the people as far as, you know, your thoughts about it? And we'll start with Alex, since you already started.
I-73, I-74. I agreed to be beneficial to the city to have a road that came from I-95 or I-20 directly to the Grand Strand. I do not think that it should be funded by the taxpayers. I look at places around the country where they have private, built and privately maintained toll roads, okay? That offer alternatives for quick transportation without burdening the taxpayers with the expense. If you want to use the toll road, you pay the toll. I mean, if they could make it where the transponders for the toll road match those in New Jersey and New York, those would love it. People who didn't want to use the toll road, the taxpayer money that would've been used for it can go to update Highway 9, 501, the public roads. Make those much more convenient and faster. But they still have the toll road for those who want to pay for it. I don't think we need to fund an interstate. If the toll road going from 95 or 20 to the Grand Strand, it wouldn't be an interstate. I really encourage you to look at how Texas and other states have done private toll roads, and how well it's worked for them.
So, make you the question is, thoughts on I-73?
Yes, sir.
Alright. So, I-73, here's, here's my two cents. It's a big issue that is an issue at the state level, it's an issue at the county level, it's an issue for Myrtle Beach, it's an issue for North Myrtle Beach. Everybody has to get on board to solve this issue, and they've been talking about it for years. And, you know, you're not going to bring I-73 into Myrtle Beach with the attitude that this city has had towards the county for the past many years. It's not, been nothing but fighting and lawsuits and more lawsuits. And unless you can get along with people at the state, people of the county, people in North Myrtle Beach, so you can all sit down and determine what's best for our region, and how are we going to pay for it? What do we, you know, we're talking about bringing I-73 here, but we can't even, you know, get along with our own county. So, I think I-73 could be a great benefit to the state and to our community, for sure. But, um, you know, how are you going to pay for it?
Well, one thing for sure. Everybody don't always get along. But, we do get along. There's been a lot of talk about 73 for the last 25 years. What 73 could, couldn't do. Let me just say this. I believe there's two reasons, very important, actually three, that we need I-73. One, if we're ever going to get any more industry in Ory County, we're going to have to have a direct route to and from I-95. Time is money when it comes to transportation. So, that is one reason. Two. Number two, that road from 95 to here, or to 22, not into Myrtle Beach, but to 22, will relieve a lot of traffic on Highway 501 and Highway 9. Number three, in the event that we were to have a catastrophic event getting ready to take place, with I-73 in place, that is an excellent evacuation route with all of our other routes. Now, can it be funded? That is, that is the fly in the buttermilk today. Let me just say this here. We are willing to fund our portion. We've already made that known. Even before all the other stuff that went on, we had made a commitment to fund I-73, and we are ready to make that commitment today. The question then becomes, does everybody else get on board with us? And the major thing, even though the state is very important, let me tell you. The vast majority of that money has to come from the federal government. Now, that's where the rubber meets the rubber. Yes, it can be done if we all work together, and we are, I believe, willing to work together. We've had our disagreements, but let me just say this about disagreements. Sometimes disagreements mean a lot to someone who disagrees. And as a result of that disagreement, Myrtle Beach fared really, really well. Thank you.
Real quick, going back to violent crimes against a person. The actual numbers, I'm not sure where the 13% increase comes from, but let's look at the last four years. A term is four years. 2017, violent crimes, 455. 2018, 426. 2019, 371. 2020, 375. That's 455 to 375. That is clearly a decrease. So, for I-73, um, I'm committed to I-73. It doesn't even come into the city. But, this is something that can be a boon for the entire area. First, for the benefit for the city is that we'll have an evacuation route that won't flood. That includes raising 22, putting it to interstate standards. Had 501 been flooded during Hurricane Florence, we would've run out of gas. We would've run out of food. We still would've had water. We wouldn't be able to get in and out. We would've probably run low on medical supplies. There were plans being made to make a, um, not a triage station, but to airlift stuff into Myrtle Beach, because we were going to be on an island, and we wouldn't have any connectivity. I'm here, I'm going to support I-73 if we can. We've got a great relationship with the county. It may not look like it. We have our disagreements. But I talk to county councilmen all the time. They're friends of mine. We all, we all work together for the common good. But I think I-73 could be a huge win for Myrtle Beach, for Ory County, and for the city of South Carolina.
This question is really, sitting here looking at this question, I know that it's not ready that Mike, and I want you to address this question. Do you think a person should be able to own a company that benefits from protecting people, business and property while holding a seat on council? Is motivation to see crime or conflict of interest, I don't, I'm just being, whatever, right now, what I see here. So, I know that you have a security company. I've been visiting you.
Well, the way I read that question, it says that, uh, if you were an elected official, you shouldn't be allowed to make a living outside of being an elected official.
What?
Okay. Do you think that a person should be able to own a company that benefits from protecting people, a business and property while holding council seat? Is this motivation to want you to see crime? Well, let me say this here. I don't want any part of anything that will benefit crime, and I definitely do not want to see crime increase. Do I own stock in a business? I sure do. That business is a security company. But, I was involved with that long before I became a member of city council. Look, I'm a retired police officer. Why couldn't I want to be involved in security? Okay? So, does my business, does my company benefit by me being a member of city council? No. Let me tell you this here. We have the same clients today, with the exception of a couple, that we had 15 years ago. I don't have any special interests except for making a living, just like most of you in this room probably do. And why shouldn't me, or any other person who's an elected official, not be, not be expected to earn a living? So, the answer to that is, I don't know where that came from, and I don't know why that was directed at me. But I will tell you, I'm a crime fighter, not a crime creator. Thank you.
As I said before we got started, I'm very impartial. I don't care. As long as it's... As I said before we got started, I'm very impartial, I don't care, as long as they're going to do a cursing, I can answer the question, because I know where these questions are coming from, but I think it's only fair that the person answered the question. So, don't put it at me, I'm going to tell you what somebody wrote, if it's something that I feel they're digging to the point that they don't need to discuss, I won't ask the question, but might be clarified, thank you for doing that. At this time, we have a homeless problem in Myrtle Beach. And I've been here all my life, fifty-seven years, I have never seen a homeless problem, particularly in my neighborhood where I live over at BTW section, it's a serious problem in Myrtle Beach, it's also beginning to generate throughout Myrtle Beach, not only over here, but it's, it's massive problem, uh, also down Boulevard area and so forth. So, Alex, as a council member, how would you address the issue because it's growing? It's growing problem, and so how would you address the issue? Alex.
Thank you, Mickey. Well, first of all, I am not waiting for your vote to start working on the homeless issue. I've been participating in the homeless coalition that Chief Rock put together for months now. And, uh, it's something that's very near and dear to, well, me and my wife. We walk the boardwalk every morning, we see the homeless out there, um, there are a number of them that are chronically homeless, who are there all the time. And, um, you know, she'll feed them from time to time, we, uh, try and encourage them to help, um, you know, Dennis knows one of the ones that we, you know, try to help and, you know, they just keep coming back. It's, it's a, it's a big issue, there's not one single solution to it, there are various reasons for people being homeless. There are a lot of resources here for them. The discussion today was, you know, are the resources that the cities, or in the city, not that the city's providing, but the resources that are here from all the different ministries and shelters and everything else, are they enabling the homeless and that's why they're coming here? And the answer is definitely not. You know, you talk to any of the homeless and they're not here because they can get three meals a day. They're, they're here because this is where they landed and, you know, if they can get someplace else, they'll go. There's drugs, there's mental issues, there are a lot of different factors contributing to the homelessness and the, um, the coalition is working on that. It's not a city issue alone. You know, the, the business community needs to get more involved, maybe some sponsorships from the business community to help, um, get the day center started and maintain a day center so they can get off the streets and into a center where every day they'll have resources to help them, get driver's license, get their identification back, find housing, um, find clothing, find the addiction treatments they need. You know, it's not a city government issue alone, the whole community has to come together for that. The, um, housing situation right now is contributing to it as well. Echo, Eastern Carolina Housing Organization, has more money than they've ever had to pay for housing, but there's no housing for them, it's just, there's no housing. No matter how much you want to pay, there's no vacancies. So, you know, that's an issue. Um, we need to get more workforce housing built so that the people who are, um, employees here, who are sometimes living two and three to a hotel room together in order to make ends meet, they can get into affordable housing and then that housing can then become available to the homeless. It's, it's, you know, a, a housing situation throughout the city that's contributing to the homelessness as well. And we need to find solutions to that in order to really make a dent in the homelessness problem.
Let me interject very quickly. Now, that's, that's a good response, but I, but I'm, my question really is, and you can pass on to the next guy, the next person, is what can we do? I mean, we talked about, we know this issue and it can't be dealt with, but what in your mind would be a solution? Because if you go on council without a solution, why would you go on council?
Alright, I think I understand Mickey's question pretty good. So what can we do about homelessness? Homelessness is a, a big problem across the nation, so I don't know if we can solve the homeless problem. But there are some things that we can do. First, let's look at the problem. Myrtle Beach has a lot to offer homeless people. We have nice warm weather, we have food, we're easygoing as far as the way we, we treat the homeless people in the city. So what's going to happen? Word's going to spread and, and more homeless people are going to come to our city. So, you have to look at those things and you have to say, do we want to keep doing these things that are attracting homeless people? That's a hard decision, the city council and the community needs to decide, you know, are we going to keep being easygoing on the homeless, are we going to keep feeding them, trying to provide housing and attracting more? Are we going to make a decision not to do so much of that? So, that's, that's, that's the first thing that we need to do to look at the homeless problem. Uh, there are some things that we can do right now. Turn the lights on in the parks. You see, there are no lights in parks. I know. Our parks all across the city, there's no lights in our parks. Why not? Let's get some, some lights going in these parks with LED lights now, it's not that expensive. What about the police patrolling our neighborhoods and our parks? If you have lights on and police presence, you're going to push homeless people out of those areas. And then, but you want to know more specifically, we, we might be able to do, and this is just a, an idea, but there, I, if, if we're going to continue to, to feed and, and care for homeless people and possibly even attract more of them, I would like to see it done at least on the outskirts of the city instead of right in the center of the city on Tenth Avenue, in our community, close to the beach, close to tourism. So, we could look at the tattoo shops, for example. At some point in the past, people thought that the tattoo shops were not good for Myrtle Beach, maybe we didn't want them right on the boulevard, so they zoned them out and that's why they're all on, on Seaport Street. So one thing we could do is maybe create an area for that type of assistance, somewhere on the outskirts of the city, zone it for that. I mean, all, all of the care that's given to the homeless is done by private nonprofit organizations, so not the city. So, it's, it's not that easy, you have to, you have to get with them and, and find out what would it take to, to help you move your operations to a better location where, where we're not attracting all these homeless people right into the heart of our city. I think that's about the best that we can do.
And I got to interject one more time before Mike come up. This is my suggestion and you guys can strive on this, these people have a problem. Drug treatment, it'd be dealt with, and you also have, uh, also mental health, it'd be dealt with, so this, this is what I'm looking for right here, not casting people aside because you've got issues. I don't want to get to that point, I'm not saying that. So, I want to make sure I'm very clear on my question, they have drugs, facilities and treatment, so my question is, as a city councilman, how would you try to look at that aspect of people that have the issue?
Fact of the matter is that there are, uh, counseling, there, there are health, uh, clinics available. Let me just say this, there is a percentage of people that are homeless, they can't take care of themselves, physically or psychologically. And that's a small percentage when you look at it. But let me say this right here, I did a study about this homeless situation about five years ago. And what the study showed, that people who were homeless out of circumstance, they worked themselves out of being homeless within about six to seven months. Actually, for those of you who were so interested, in our company, we hired over the past five or six years, some homeless guys to come to work for us. Guess what they did? They worked themselves out of being homeless, they got their own places to live, they got their own transportation because they wanted to not be homeless anymore. We, we have the, when we have the, uh, businesses throughout the city of Myrtle Beach that can't get people to work. And people come up to you in a parking lot and say, hey, uh, can you help us out this week? Yeah, I can help you out. There, there's help wanted all along this, this, this highway out here. Oh, we don't want a job, we just want some help. The truth is, there's a lot of folks here that are here homeless, they won't work in a pie factory tasting pie. Okay? So, I do not have passion for them, and I'm not going to apologize for that. So, it's not against the law to be homeless, but it is against the law for you to trash up our community, for you to trash up our streets, it's against the law for you to sleep and be passed out on the boardwalk with a needle stuck in your arm. Okay? So, my, and I'll tell you something else, this aggressive pandemic, let me tell you, you want to talk about how people feel unsafe? The only thing I've heard somebody say to me this summer about feeling unsafe is homeless people harassing them. Okay? So, it's, in our city ordinance, that's against the law. It's against the law in our city ordinance to sleep in a public park. It's against the law to holler people's heads on our tables and on our benches. So, I tell you what we do, we enforce those laws. I don't care if they go to jail, they get turned loose in thirty minutes. As a police officer, your job is to arrest, your job is not to worry about what happens to them after they get into jail. Okay? So, let's do that. Let's make it to a point where it's more comfortable for them to be in these areas. And maybe, maybe, we may start to see the light at the end of the tunnel. Thank you.
Well, about a hundred things went through my mind as this question changed and we heard answers. I don't know what the answer is to homelessness, but I know Mike's got some good points. There are people that want help and we have help for them. We need more help. We've got way too many people addicted to opioids and we don't have enough help for those people. Those people end up becoming homeless, they end up committing crime. We've got to find ways to get people into rehab. And I've got a theory and I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's accurate, but it seems like there are more homeless people in Myrtle Beach every single day. And I think that's because cities up north that haven't gone back to work, where homeless people congregated in downtown cities, they needed the people to be around, to panhandle. And we've created a great city. Millions of people come here every year, so that's a great place to be homeless, if you are. So, for the solution, I don't know, let's help, let's help those that will take help. Let's work with those that won't. And let's find some treatment for those that are addicted to drugs.
Thank you all. I want, I want to point out something, there, there was a pretty good response to that question. And I know we have all the answers to the homeless situation, but something's got to be done about it, as I said, and we have people at Tim McCray in the community and other folks, we have, they come up with inquisitive ideas about how we can work with the homeless people and so forth, and they are people willing to work in the community with homeless people. Uh, I don't care if nobody now, I know where I came from. But I do say, uh, you got to have some compassion for some people, because you don't know what people going through. And I would say this much, so all I ask the city to do, uh, if, if, you know, looking at me as a voter, is try to help some people who want to help us. You got to find out who it is, you got to put a plan together for these people that they can go through this filter through, that's all I'm asking. So, this question we're going to run to is downtown redevelopment. Downtown redevelopment, uh, there's a lot going on downtown and we don't have the, the pavilion anymore, it's, it's been going for fifteen, sixteen years, if not longer, uh, that was described from Myrtle Beach at the time, the pavilion area. Uh, and I think there's some work going on in, in the super block area that's going on, um, and if you, existing council people know more about what's going on with the downtown redevelopment, I believe, and if I'm wrong, I apologize, but I think you got more in tune towards going on in the, downtown redevelopment. And the other guys know, I'd like for you to come, come in on that with Mike.
Our downtown area, I had a business person on Main Avenue North extension say to me about five years ago, he said, I can't believe the city's allowed the downtown area, talking about the business area in what we refer to as the super block, to get to where it is. So, I took that to heart and so we started working on that. Now, some people will say that they didn't like the way we took our approach on it to start with. But at the end of the day, if you take a look at the downtown area, what we, those of us who lived here a long time ago, you know, you've heard of the super block, uh, everybody has heard that in that area. Uh, if you look at that today to what it was five years ago, you see some pretty good changes taking place. But that's not the only area, if we're talking about redevelopment and development in the downtown area. There are some other areas, and unfortunately, and I know you're not going to like this answer, but it's the answer I have. When we discuss things with hospital investors and we discuss those things in executive session, then we're not allowed to talk about those things in public. But I will assure you, and I see some of those looks on faces right now, and that's quite alright, I understand, but, and, and I, and I see some expressions being, "Munk", but that's the law. That is the law. But I will assure you, there are a number of things that are being discussed that are going to be very good for not just the super block, the arts and innovative district, brothers going south, continuing south along, uh, Broadway, down to, at least to the squash, going south on between seventeen and the ocean, going south, going north, the same thing. So, there are things. Uh, even, even just right up the street here, we're working with a group about a new wave park and an amphitheater. Now, we can talk about that because it's all for public. But, I will say this, that we're all interested in seeing change come and change is coming. You know, I told, uh, Mr. Shelley, you remember me making this comment to you a few years ago, sometimes that wheel turns a little bit slow, but at least it does turn. And that's what we're doing. It, Greg, you made a great point earlier, it just doesn't happen overnight. But when you look at what's taken place thus far, you can definitely see a change, especially where we focused on right now in the super block area.
That's it, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Greg, we give you Greg now.
Well, I tell you, I've been frustrated with the speed at which city government moves. I would have liked a lot of the things that we're working on to be done three and a half years ago. And I wasn't on council at the start of the downtown redevelopment, but when I came on, I was all on board. My friends talk about, hey Greg, have you been to Greenville lately? Have you seen what they've done there with their downtown? Have you been to Florence lately? Have you been to Wilmington lately? They're doing great things with their downtown. My friends around the state don't say, have you been to Myrtle Beach lately? Have you seen what they've done with their downtown? But they will. We spent eighty years building Myrtle Beach as a city for tourists. It's time to build Myrtle Beach for the residents. People say, well, that's not a great place to do it. That was the center of town, that is the best place to do it. We're going to create something that people around the state and around the southeast are going to say, have you been to Myrtle Beach lately? Have you seen what they're doing? We're working on it.
Yeah, Graywood hasn't worked on it this long. Other city councilmen, they wrote it.
Greenville spent over thirty years building their downtown. We've been doing it for three and a half.
Alright, everyone. So, I don't know as much about what's going on on the inside like the council here, but, uh, I, I own Newman Brothers, I'm a general contractor, and I've remodeled several properties down in the downtown, right on Broadway Street. I'm doing, uh, I'm doing one right, right now where the, the folks have taken the, uh, the building where that old parts store is and they've done a, a new apartment upstairs and they've got an architectural firm coming in and, uh, you know, to grow the downtown, it's very simple, it's numbers. If you own a property and you want to invest money in it, you look at how much can you get for rent? And that determines whether you're going to invest any money in your property or not. If you can't get enough rent to justify the investment, you're not, the area's not going to grow. gonna grow. So what we're talking about is growth in the downtown area. Has anybody ever tried to grow a garden? You need fertile soil, and you need to control the weeds. So, you know, first of all, if you go in downtown, there are a bunch of crack motels down there. It's, it's nasty right on the other side of, of, of Broadway Street, you know? You're not gonna grow a profitable, prosperous downtown with all those weeds that you got all over the place. You gotta get rid of those weeds. And then you gotta make, make it a fertile environment for the people that already own those businesses to either invest in their properties, or sell them to somebody else that wants to come in with some money and do something there. So, you know, if you wanna grow that area, why isn't it taking so long? I, I don't know, maybe nobody's talking to, 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 to the people that own the properties, asking, how can we, you know, provide some fertile soil? What weeds do we need to get rid of? You have a problem with parking? Uh, yeah, there's like no parking downtown. How are you gonna bring businesses and, and, or, or people to come live in apartments like Market Commons, mixed use, you got apartments here, it's a lot of traffic, it's a lot of parking. You wanna grow the area, provide some fertile soil and get rid of the weeds.
All right. Alex.